I call to order this meeting of the Warren County School Board for Wednesday, May 15. First item on the agenda is to accept the modified agenda as a motion. Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Action Agenda, approval of 2019-20 salary scales, Mr. Smith.
Okay. You should have it in your Chromebooks there. The document that would be all our salary scales for upcoming 2019, 20 school years. So, as the other night, the budget was approved, so salary scales can now be approved. Positions on all scales except the miscellaneous and supplement scales will receive a minimum of a 3% salary increase. Other revisions are as followed. We are able to implement Phase One, which would be the teacher's scales as recommended by PayPoints, compensation, classification study. Phase One includes addressing years of experience, teacher scale from 11 to 25 years of experience. The increase there is about seven to, it ranges from 7 to 13 percent. From zero to 10, it's the 3% increase, and from 25 on, I'm sorry, 26 on, it is the 3% increase. So, that would implement Phase One. Also included in Phase One is a support area that was identified through our study, and that would be bus drivers. So, it was recommended by PayPoint that we look at the bus drivers. So, Phase One includes addressing the entire scale for bus drivers, and basically it's to be competitive within our region, and it also includes for that group of employees a step for all returning contracted drivers.
It's really nice that the Board of Supervisors gave us enough funding to be able to do that entire group of folks all at once. So, it's going to make a big, big difference in our recruitment and our retention there as well. There's no doubt we're going to see that happen right away.
I'm sure the data hasn't come back yet on contracts being signed, a few more weeks.
Yeah. We're really, we're really not going to know until the middle of June as a real number. We can, we can look where we were last year about this time, and we're definitely down. We definitely, down in a good way. We have less, less people resigning. I got, after the, after the meeting, sending out a message, I got quite a bit of feedback from folks being thankful and appreciative and knowing that you guys and the Board of Supervisors and the community really support the schools. And it was, it was, I feel like there's going to be a difference, we'll just see how big it is. There's going to be a difference. It's pretty neat.
Good.
Very, very nice.
Any questions or discussion on the salary scale?
How many contracts do you think you've received back?
I won't, I won't rece, I won't receive them back for about another week.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I can, I can provide some.
They just went out last week, didn't they?
Yeah, they went out. So, we approved that on the 8th, I believe that it was. So, on the 9th, we started getting contracts out to teachers first, and then this, this past week, we started with the licensed, but non-teachers like administrators and at the school level and those type of things. And then after tonight's meeting, if you approve the, which you already have, the support staff, which would be part of the personnel report, then we will run those contracts out to the school tomorrow. We actually will be able to knock those out in the morning and go ahead and get those out to the school. We give 15 days to be able to return the contracts back to us. They're handed out through their main office, they're handed out to the teachers and to the staff. Someone at that school, normally it's the secretary or someone there is the collector of those, and then they send those back over to our office, and then we check those off. They have 15 days to return those. And so, we're like halfway through that point at, at this time. And so, we feel real confident of what we've seen thus far as far as the lack of turnover. So, we're hopeful that we'll, we're going to lose some regardless, that's just the way life is. But, but I feel much better where we are currently than where we were last year at this time.
Really, only about halfway to look at this year because it was so late in the process that we were able to finalize. Some, some people made a move that they felt was appropriate for them, that they'd already made the move, and, you know, that doesn't mean they couldn't circle back to us, but it'd really be next year that we see the true impact. Did I miss, on the bus drivers, is there like an average or a percentage or what the increase was?
The increase actually itself will go from, if you look at it, I'll give it to you in a bunch of different ways. It all turns out to be the same thing, whichever one sticks to you the best. Hourly rate wise, if you were to break it down, it goes from just about under, a little bit under $14 an hour to about $16.33 an hour for each. As you kind of move down the scale, it actually can be some significant increases, and there can be several thousand dollars increases for some, a couple thousand dollars for others. Percentage wise, what does that equal from what they started with to what they're getting?
I was going to say 13.
So, all around, regardless of how you look at those numbers, it's a significant increase in regards to the original amount that they made.
And if that started, so that's what?
The starting salaries, no, would be $16.33 per hour, which I think works out to be $13,200, something like that, or $13,200. Yeah, it's on that. A little bit over $13,000 as in compared to previously, which was $11,400 or something like that, so a couple thousand dollars difference. We've lost some people over the past few years who actually live in our county, but they go to, let's say Frederick County, or perhaps they drive in Warrington or something like that for maybe the transit system. So, we're hopeful that some of those people who left to live here because of that increase may decide that, hey, I'd like to come back and don't have to travel as far and on the same schedule as my children perhaps.
Year one is $13,219 for a little four and a half hours of that, or $23,500 for eight hours.
Any other questions or discussion? Someone like to offer a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the 2019-20, 2019-20 salary scale supplemental and miscellaneous scale be approved as presented.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Request to assign four previously unassigned positions in fiscal year 2020 budget.
Okay. Also a part of our budget for this coming year was the addition of four new teaching level positions. Very pleased to be able to do that as well. So, I'm coming to you with my recommendations about what to do with those positions. And this is based on taking a look at priorities at our schools. There's very many more priorities than these four positions are going to do, but these are our, these are our top ones that we need to do, I feel. So, what I'd like to do is use two of the positions to be division-wide English language EL teachers, and they'll support, we currently have two, is that right?
Three.
Three. We currently have three. These two will help support all nine schools. So, they're going to, based on the population that starts school next year, we'll divide these folks up, and they will be, they'll be, depending on the number of students that leave school, like we think at E. Wilson Morrison will probably be a dedicated person just there, just because of the number of students that are English learners there, that some may have more, more schools. So, those two, one of the positions, I'd like to have that be a split position between the two middle schools of the reading specialist. That's one area that we haven't had a person that is able to do that. The reading specialty kind of goes away at elementary, and we know that we have some kids that are still struggling with that there. So, I'd like to do that. And then the final bit, position, I like to hold an abeyance, and I ask Rob to put that word in.
That's what I asked. That's what I asked. Who came up with that one?
Your vocabulary for the week.
It just grew.
You did five times every day, so it becomes part of your vocabulary.
Every, every year, we just don't know some numbers, especially at our elementary schools. We are, we're required to keep our class sizes at certain levels in four of our five elementary schools, everybody but AS Rhodes. And if we go above a number like 22 to 1 at E. Wilson Morrison in K through 2, we need to add another position, or we're going to lose some of our Title II funding. So, I need to have a position available for that. If it doesn't need to be used in the elementary realm, we'll, we'll use it somewhere. I mean, we, we know we have 63 positions, you know, based on the salary study, that we could put things, and there's a whole list of priorities that I've got, and I will come to you at that point and say, we need it for elementary or we don't. So, that's what I'd like to do. That's all right.
So, you'll know more toward the beginning of the year?
Beginning of the year. We may know as early as, you know, the end of July based on numbers, but typically we're not going to know until September, who walks in the door.
Questions or discussion? Mr. Williams has that one.
I don't. I don't, I don't think I know enough to ask a question on this.
You've got things on. There's a, like I said, there's, there's, there's 20 top priorities. I'll be honest with you, there's 20 top priorities there. The two EL positions, based on our audit that we had with the federal government this year, basically said, you need to do this. Otherwise, we could be in a situation where an Office of Civil Rights complaint could be made that ends up being a, not a healthy thing for us. So, that's a reason why. And, you know, our primary mission is teaching kids how to read, write, do math, and that we know that we have a need in reading at middle school.
I just want, I guess, and just thinking out loud, I know, like Bill Compton used to go to E. Wilson to read all the time. Is there people in the community that would come to a middle school?
I think there are a lot of retired people that if they knew they were needed, we could, you'd almost have to have a dedicated person setting that up.
I know, I don't know how you manage.
So, and we do have some volunteers. I don't know if we have it particularly for reading at the middle school, but we do have some volunteers that come in. We've talked about that. We've talked about, you know, how to, how to get that set up.
I have a good article on that.
Yeah. And it would be a really advantage. It would be a really advantage.
I think everybody would do it.
Yeah.
Start with your parents.
Thought about it.
No, I can, I can tell you, if people are interested in that, we would be able to.
It's called when Bill Compton used to do that.
Yeah, all the time.
It's easier for some reason at the elementary level than it is once you get beyond that. That's just a, where people.
And if you can get them at that level, hopefully you can avoid problems.
Like, I'd like E. Wilson this year as a number of volunteers that come in all the time, and so.
I used to do it every Friday, all my kids were from state. Madam Chair, I move that four additional positions in the fiscal year 2020 budget be assigned as follows. Two as English language teachers, one as a middle school reading specialist, and the fourth be helping the opening of school and assessment of class size.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Of course, this doesn't mean, these are just the four of the budget.
Yep.
I mean, we always have one or two that the turnover money provides us with the opportunity to add somebody if we need to do that. It's just the four of the 20 we address with this.
Actually, four of the what, 63?
Yeah. And I say that number, I don't think we'll ever get to the point where we have 63 more teachers with our current numbers, but it was kind of a, to me, it's a, it's a point that we should take is that we do need additional supports for students, and that's, that's what that number means. I don't have a specific number. If I went straight with what I had requested this year, it would be in the twenties. I think it was 26, 24, somewhere in there. That was the requested positions just from schools. So, and I'm getting ready to talk about the next thing regarding the positions as well.
Approval to reclassify two teaching positions for the 2019-2020 school year.
So, as we do every year, we take a look at class sizes and see where, we try to be good stewards of, of the funds that we have. And we have two situations in the upcoming year where I think I can actually reduce the number of teachers I need in particular situations to be able to use those positions for another priority need. So, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. So, the first involves the fifth grade teaching position at Ressi Jeffries, where next year's fifth grade class will be smaller than this year's. Therefore, four teachers instead of five are going to be sufficient to be able to handle those students. What I'd like to do is use that position and reclassify that. It's also, it's a teaching level position as a dean of students at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary. You know, this year, we moved Mrs. Rudisil to E. Wilson Morrison to give three administrative supports. We're taking Mrs. Rudisil away. She has done wonderful. The job is not done. I'd say on a day-to-day basis, the, the supports that many of those students need have three people running pretty hard.
You're still down there right now.
Right now.
At the end of the year.
And to be able, and, you know, we're always balancing needs. You know, honestly, I need her here too. I mean, there's, there's just lots of things going on division-wide, which E. Wilson runs, and that's why the recommendation was to pull her back. As we've thought through that for the remainder, since that decision was made, if at all possible to add a support that would, that would support the office, but they'd be primarily working with students and/or teachers that need those supports with the many behavior issues that are still going on at E. Wilson Morrison. We're seeing, no, I'm not, I'm not going to try and steal any of your thunder because you've got good thunder right now. We're seeing some very positive results on our SL score so far. I mean, very, you know, very happy. And part of that reason is, is that teachers have been able to concentrate on instruction in the classroom because they have other supports to support them. We don't want to stop that if at all possible. So, that's the recommendation I'm making with that position. It's still, a dean is a quasi administrator, but it's still at the teacher level.
And it's still on the teacher's scale.
Teacher on the teacher's scale. They do have, there is a stipend that they get for being a dean, but it's, it's still a teacher level. What I also envision is something like when we talked about the Skyline Middle School Dean that was transferred from Brighter Futures to Skyline Middle School, kind of being a floating position to kind of be wherever the hotspot is this year, and we always have them. We think we're going to keep that dean position at Skyline Middle School next year because we know they still will need that. That this could also potentially, we'll, we'll look at it each year. We really need a classroom teacher somewhere, and we don't need it as a support anymore, we'll move into a classroom teacher position. But it could be a floating dean too. It might be LFK in a year or two that we need to have some extra support there, or it might be Hilda Barber, whoever. So, that would be, that would be that. Then the second, talking a lot here, sorry about that, is a fourth grade teaching position at AS Rhodes. So, the current class size has decreased where next year it's fifth graders, two teachers should be sufficient there. And there's, I'm, I'm doing two things at once here. I'm freeing up a classroom as well. As you know, we're doing a renovation at AS Rhodes, and we need places to put classes while the renovations are going on. So, the current, the current fourth, fourth, fourth grade has three teachers, and they move to fifth, class size will be right about 25. It's a, it's a, it's a lot of kids, but it's, it's very doable and manageable. We think we'll be okay. So, plus what I'm getting ready to do with the positions and support AS Rhodes too. So, so I'd like to do that, and that will give us four spaces at AS Rhodes to move classrooms around when they're doing the renovation, so we can take four teachers out of their spots, do the renovations in the classrooms, move them back, pick four more teachers, and that actually is going to help the project move, you know, maybe 30% faster because we were going to only have three position, three classrooms to do that. So, we think that will happen. Then what I'd like to do with that, with that position is one of the priorities for years, I've heard from, I, probably as long as I've been here, that AS Rhodes needs a full, needs a full-time guidance person. Even though there are 280 kids, those needs are, are great as well. Make that position full-time guidance. That would take that shared position that's currently between Ressi Jeffries and AS Rhodes, and we would now share that between Ressi Jeffries and E. Wilson Morrison. So, still keep Ressi Jeffries at the same, they would have one and a half guidance, AS Rhodes would get a full time, and we're giving another support to E. Wilson Morrison that I don't think anybody working with that school on a daily basis is going to argue that we need there. We need vision guidance support, or counseling support. So, that was a long-winded explanation of two things. But it's, you know, all these, all these are, you know, we're, they're.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't rebuild it. It helps us, it helps us meet some needs that we know are in place. We're not making up new positions to do it, we're just reclassifying current positions so that, that uses our, the funds that we do have as wisely as we can. So, that's what.
So, our third grade class is smaller, we're the rising fourth grade.
And even though maybe the folks that are in these teaching positions won't move into these reclassified positions through attrition, no one's going to lose a job. That's, that's the other thing.
There you go. Good one. Thank you.
There will be another position.
It's important to say out loud, yeah. There's places for all, there's places for those two people to be, and we've already kind of talked with them about that this is a potential happening depending on what the approval is, but I think we have, I think we have the plan figured out.
I move that a fifth grade teaching position at Ressi Jeffries Elementary School be reclassified as a dean of students position at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary School. And a fourth grade teaching position at AS Rhodes Elementary School be reclassified as a full-time guidance position at that school.
Second.
Anybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Yes, again, 20 problems. Sorry.
Is this the, on the next? Are you correct?
Yes, 17-8, yes. That's the previous year's carry.
Request to appropriate a portion of the 2017-2018 school operating fund surplus.
All right. The county's received a draft copy of the fiscal 18 audit. A copy of the page showing the school board's operating fund and surplus is attached. The school surplus fund, the school surplus is $1,050,452. During the fiscal year 19 budget approval process, it was agreed that the county would need to retain one-half of the fiscal 18 surplus. This reduces the amount available to the school board to $525,226. Additionally, it was agreed that the fiscal 18 surplus would be used to pay the school board's portion of the pay and classifications value, and that amount was $34,000, leaving a net available surplus of $491,226. So, the, we, we come to you every year to, to do this, to use surplus dollars. So, the proposed uses of these dollars, $491,226, are to cover the expected utility costs, which we've talked about in excess of the current budget, to cover the cost of the one-to-one technology initiative that we did this year of $176,000 in grade 6 to 12, and to cover $90,226 of projected maintenance costs in excess of the current budget. You know, we've had a little bit of a perfect storm this year on some things. As you recall, you know, our September 30 count has kind of held true throughout the year. We're down over 100 students, and that's roughly half a million dollars. So, you can see that this surplus carryover is desperately needed to get that, get that budget back in, back in line. So, the issuance of the final audit report is contingent on the county receiving an audit report from another entity that is being a component, a unit of the county government. The audit has no impact on the school audit results, therefore, it is being recommended that the Board of Supervisors be requested to appropriate the fiscal 2018 school operating surplus in the amount of $491,226 to this fiscal year's operating. Okay, I'd be to try to answer any questions and make adjustments. That's Rob's bill.
I have something kind of, it has to do with E. Wilson. And if you look at the bills we paid, you know, the electric's outrageous, but it says water and sewer, with a little slash mark, EWM, so that's E. Wilson Morrison, then it says Walker AV. And I don't know what that, that, I mean, when I hear Walker AV, I think Walker Avenue.
It, it, is the electric bill?
It's sewer and water for like 1,600, 1,681.
Well.
But I just don't, in a minute, I can email it to you and I forgot.
It may be a misnominquature there. What happens is, I believe, that on the electric, if it were electric, here's what the explanation would be. It would be a school, and then sometimes those flashing lights the town has up, we have to pay for them. And there probably is one on Walker Avenue for, for the Hilda Barber and Warren County High School.
I would think.
It may have been just when the bill was coded here in our department that the wrong description got put in for that particular one. If it were electric, I'd say that's.
I know, because like there's the flashes and all, but I didn't know. And I meant to email that to you, and I got tied up doing other things and forgot.
Mr.?
I'll have to check on that. I think it's a case of.
Yeah, I mean, just.
And I'm not sure why it says E. Wilson Morrison, Walker Avenue, because that would be associated with one of the other schools. I'm going to have to check on that one.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I apologize for not.
That was under E. Wilson? That was under E. Wilson?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why Walker is associated with E. Wilson Morrison. It may just be.
Yeah, I don't.
Few things got put together.
I just didn't want to see it somehow get billed somehow.
Yeah.
We should have.
Rob, if I may add you that.
Yes.
In approving the monthly utility invoices, and it's funny, we were talking, but I was looking at AS Rhodes, and I just signed half a dozen utility invoices for them. One of the things I don't notice, which we're going to do, is with each account description or meter ID number, there is no description of what that meter serves.
Serves.
Okay. So, that is our next step, and once we get them all identified, we will notify the town utilities. That'll be on each and every invoice. Because I'm still, I'm still somewhat new, and I'm used to knowing what meter supports what.
And you'll know if there's a problem.
Exactly. Well, when I looked at AS Rhodes, I said, why in the world do I have five electric meters at 22,000 square feet? What am I feeding here? Well, it's the learning cottages, it's the multipurpose gym, it's, you know, so it's things of that nature. So, you'll see that over time as we continue to.
I think that's really good and concrete.
We'll make sure then that description gets carried forward to the report that you get.
Helps us be more transparent.
Yes.
Well, you can pick up on a problem pretty quick.
Well, and I found another one, LFK, meter said temporary. Okay, now, it turns out it was, the module is over there.
And it's still.
It's still, and on the utility bill, it's called temporary.
Yeah, they weren't supposed to stay there.
Well, modules aren't, right? But they do.
They have a, have a tendency to stay.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have a question?
Thank you.
This is something typically, the, in all honesty, the surplus is something we would want to ask for, for one type, one-time expenditures, things like that, buses, things like that, or maybe to be put into the textbook fund, something like that. This year, as, as was mentioned, was the perfect storm, and typically, these overages in some areas, we would be able to offset them where we were under in other areas, and we wouldn't have to come and ask for this. With the 125, I think, fewer students this year than last, and the almost half a million dollar impact that had on our revenue, that really tied our hands, and that's almost exactly the amount that we're asking for here. Again, had that not happened, then we would have handled these other things within our budget, our own budget, and we'd be asking you to appropriate those funds probably for school buses or to put in the textbook fund, which we definitely have a, a need in the textbook fund for additional money to, to fund textbooks, the adoptions, and some things that are going on. So, it's, it's unusual to ask for it for, for a purpose like this. So it's unusual to ask for it for a purpose like this, but unfortunately, circumstances this year do require it.
Any other questions or discussions?
Madam Chair, I move that the board of supervisors be requested to appropriate $491,226 of the fiscal 2018 school operating budget surplus to the fiscal 2019 operating budget.
Second.
All those who favor that?
Aye.
Motion, Harris, thank you. Court session. Renewal and maintenance service contracts for 2019, 2020 school year, Mr. Lefk.
Okay. Well, it's, you've been through before, you know, we do have various building service contracts needed to, you know, operate the schools, and each year we have bought the annual renewals, price increases to you for your review and approval. We currently have eight service vendors out there, or eight types of service we buy every month, you know, the frequency varies depending upon what it is. And we are in the final renewal year of these initial contracts, so meaning next year, late fall, we'll be reviewing scopes of what we need, and then rebidding a lot of these services out. Matter of fact, all of them are, this is the final renewal year on these contracts. I will tell you, if, as part of that review process of our current scopes for these services, if there is an existing open-end state contract or other school district contract that we can ride and the scopes match, I'm a big advocate for using those. One, not only for the expediency in getting a contract renewed or out there, but the larger districts usually are pretty tight when they write their scopes, pretty picky about what they want. So I've had good success with those. So, you know, if we can find them, not all of these may be necessary to be recompeted with an actual formal invitation for bid, so. There are probably one or two other contracts that need to be added to this, and I think the budget, current budget funding, the funding levels we have will be sufficient to do it. One is water treatment for our chilled water systems, i.e. the central plant systems where we have a cooling tower and a chiller. We're buying the services as needed right now. And for those, some may be familiar with this process or not, there's a reason we need a water treatment system for these type of HVAC systems. It's to prevent scaling, corrosion, and biological growth within our systems. I think we've all heard the term Legionnaires' disease, and that's the last thing we want in the cooling towers. But those, you know, that's why water treatment is, you know, critical to your main central plant systems. And the second, what would it be, emergency generator service? I think we currently have five schools with generators, and Warren County Middle is about to become the primary or designated Red Cross shelter. And we want to make sure that these generators are being serviced. Right now, the service is being provided on a one-shot basis. When we need the service, they'll request a quote and issue a PO for it.
How do you know you need the service? Do you do routine?
Yeah, it's routine, based on the manufacturer's recommendations. And they'll tell you what needs to be done, and whether it's monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, or whatever. But especially on, you know, with Warren County Middle School becoming the primary shelter, it's got to have that dedicated service to it. So those two small ones that, you know, we should be looking at adding the next budget
This is just to discuss it this evening.
So you answered back on the elevator. I guess, I guess it was quite a learning experience for me, because Landmark won't sell their parts to anybody else.
No, it's actually the elevator manufacturer, Schindler. Sometimes equipment manufacturers will hold their equipment proprietary. That means only they can work on it, no one else. And if someone else works on it, then you're going to pay the price. I'll be honest, I haven't seen this in a few years. Typically, you'll see it with what I call low voltage systems, fire alarm, especially the software, where only they can work on it if you have to make programming changes, et cetera. But it doesn't surprise me with the elevator industry that Schindler's done this.
So I guess the moral behind the story of what I've seen is we make sure we never install that product.
There's a lot of that.
I mean, it needs to be compatible that whoever the service providers are can get whatever product easily and not be held accountable.
Right.
In the sense of-
Years ago.
Or without warranty or something.
Yeah. And that comes in the design specifications when you're designing something new with the architect, you get asked, make sure, one, does your equipment meet our standards, and two, we don't want any proprietary equipment in here, if at all possible. It's just one of those unfortunate things. And honestly, years ago, it used to be with elevator contracts, only the factory would service your elevator. Doesn't matter, didn't matter whose brand it was. Otis only worked on Otis, and Schindler only worked on Schindler. You didn't have any third-party service support vendors. That kind of fell by the wayside when the union started falling apart, because they all used to be union workers for the most part. And then everybody else started servicing everybody else, and some manufacturers, when they hadn't made their stuff proprietary. So you're kind of locked into them a little bit, you know. The other interesting thing is, I can't believe what we're currently paying for the other elevator systems within the school division. I don't know how this vendor-
Good or bad?
Good.
Good.
The price is so low.
It's phenomenal.
Whenever Mike Riley first told me, I said, "You gotta be kidding me." That's it?
Yeah.
So when he showed me the contract, that's a, he bit it. It's weird how some of this works sometimes, but.
I'll ask the silly question. Can we keep the current elevators excluding Warren County Middle School? See what that's going to be, and then use the vendor that installed it? Would we save money, the one at the middle school? In other words, have two contracts out there.
It's possible. It's not unheard of to have separate vendors, separate buildings, or separate systems.
I mean, if it saves us a couple, three grand.
Sure.
I've been looking at that.
Couple, yeah, we'll certainly look at it.
I mean, it's well worth. I'd say it saves you a thousand bucks.
Well, we're fortunate, you know, Warren County Middle School is just approaching two years old, I believe. So as far as replacement components or parts, we shouldn't have a lot of breakage taking place. And basically, the way the scope was written, again, everything's inclusive, so if it breaks down, this contractor has to eat it, because it's already in his contracted price. The way you get around it, so you can say we're someone buying an insurance policy if you want to. The other way to get around that is to break out separate line items for emergency labor rates and predetermined markups on replacement components. So there's just different ways.
So are you suggesting you want us to take a look at it?
I would, I'd like to take a look.
Take a look at the-
Schindler should get it.
The school board.
I should be able to get it.
You'll do that? Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
And thanks for, thanks for seeing that, Mr. Lefk.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just, I was wondering if Warren County Middle School, if there's any thing out there from Red Cross, the government, or anything like that, because it is going to be dedicated or designated as a shelter, if there's any-
Would there be any funding?
Any funding since it's being used as a-
Yeah, we have a contract with, with, an agreement with the county with the emergency cost recovery manager, Rick Farrell, and we have rates that are for when we do operate the shelter that we are reimbursed. So for instance, we're-
I just wondered if there's any funding, like for the generator?
Maintain.
Oh, for maintaining the generator.
PM of the generator to maintain that, or-
That's a question we can-
Yeah, we could definitely talk about that with Rick. But right now, the way we have it set up is all money, anything we do will get reimbursed for.
Is it just in our account?
Skyline is also set up as a shelter, but Warren County is the primary shelter because the shelter, the generator is set up a little bit differently.
It's a lot more robust. It's the size of a bus.
Yeah.
So we've, we did a, we just finished an exercise.
24-hour round.
Yeah. We just finished a big exercise at Warren County Middle, and I guess in July, we'll be doing a full-scale walkthrough with actors, actors as potential guests, and so we'll go through the process. It's a joint effort between Warren County Schools, the Public Safety Office, Red Cross, and the Department of Social Services. Quite extensive.
All good? Discussion of paid school meal prices for 2019, 2020.
All right. The Healthy Hungry Kid, the Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act of 2010 requires school divisions participating in the National School Lunch Program to ensure sufficient funds are provided to account for meal service. Students not eligible for food and abused meals. Schools charging less than $3 for paid lunches are required to adjust the whole meal price, price to cover the difference. Warren County Middle School's current lunch price for elementary students is $2, and $2.10 for middle and high school students. Based on the food services fund balance and the increased cost of food, we do recommend increasing lunch prices by 10 cents for elementary, middle, and high school students. The recommended new lunch prices for 2019, 2020 school year would be $2.10 for elementary students and $2.20 for middle and high school students. This will be the first time school lunch prices have increased since the 1617 school year. And the recommendation is to leave the breakfast price at $1.25. The last time breakfast price was increased was in 2014, 15 school year. There was an, there was an attachment that shows surrounding school district, but I also have a paper copy if you're interested in just taking a look at that, where we stand regionally, so it's kind of interesting to see. The additional revenue generated by this increase is estimated to be at $19,783, and it must be deposited in the school food service account and be used only for school food service expenses. As you will remember, that the cafeteria fund is completely separate from our operating budget. It needs to be self-sufficient. All of the funds generated are used to pay for all the costs. So, and we, as you know, have had a very successful relationship with Sedexo to be able to handle those costs. Since we've, actually, since we've turned over to them, we've had no issues with food costs.
E. Wilson is the only CEP school. I thought Rested was.
Nope. Yeah, at this time, the ability to do that, it just wasn't quite there. Yeah. You can see that, you can see on the, on the surrounding school district prices, you know, we're right in line with some of the lowest, if not the lowest, especially for Winchester, you can see, is at zero in elementary. It's because all of their schools are this, you can see, appropriate.
All of their elementary schools.
All of the elementary schools.
Winchester City doesn't have that.
Oh, yeah.
Now, Frederick County has that.
Winchester City.
Winchester City.
Frederick County, yeah. Just, as another point, you know, food costs, you know, we had Sue Ann did kind of an analysis of kind of the top 16 things that we buy for food, including milk and yogurt, sweet potato fries, and apples, and cucumbers, and tomatoes, and all those kinds of things. And since, since we last made a cost increase in lunch, the cost for those items has gone up 17%. So, you know, and they've been maintaining their business with that cost increase. So, you know, it's just like everything else, things go up. We're, we have done an excellent job of holding to a very affordable cost. You know, 10 cents, if a kid would buy lunch every day, that's going to be $18 for the year. So.
I think you answered me on this. Sue Ann had answered. One of the things I care about around the country that sort of creates some alarm and that kind of, is lack of better, owed bills for lunches.
In terms of not giving kids a meal, we continue to feed students to do that, and we work with the families that have those difficulties. Yep.
And we get the same, you know, right?
Absolutely.
It's like we need to put serving cucumbers.
Isn't that something?
145%.
What?
And I bet you not too many kids eat cucumbers. That seems to be a little-
Cucumber pie.
145%.
Knock them here out.
Wow.
Isn't that interesting? Yeah, there you go. Sorry, I didn't need copies. I just, I just had that as a kind of interest for that. But then, again, this is just for information discussion this evening, and again, at our June board meeting, we'll be making notes and keeping track of stuff.
Broke cucumbers.
Yeah, he's got plenty of cucumbers.
Cucumber field.
Some more cucumber.
Well, when you can stoke a whole greenhouse, you can water it all for us also. Is there any further business?